We called the meeting to order, it's what 6:03 PM. We've got all of the members of the city council here, except we're not sure about Doral. In the state. We've got several members of our planning commission here, some have been excused, mayor's being excused. So I think we're here to start off by just talking about the Summit Creek approvals, so I'll just turn the time over to Summit Creek's representatives. Unless there's something, Jody, is there anything else we need to take care before that?
No, there's nothing we need to do before that, so you're good to go.
I just would like to, I just need to say something, who's talking first, Ben or Steve? But I have another meeting scheduled tonight, so I'll only be able to stay on for an hour. So I just wanted you to know that upfront.
Thank you.
Same with me.
All right. Okay, well, we'll get started then, I'd want to just, first of all, just say thank you. I know you're, all of you are busy and your time is valuable, and so we appreciate you taking some time out this evening to meet with us. I thought before we start, it would be helpful just to maybe do a couple of quick introductions to some of the members of our team, of course, you all know Steve really well and Bucky. We also have some consultants that have been working on the project as well, but just do some quick intro. So Eric Langvart, he is our landscape architect and land planner. And he has over 26 years of experience across, you know, many different high-profile, very successful projects, including Victory Ranch, Promontory Red Ledges, The Colony at White Pine Canyon, Glenwild, Well Holly, Mayflower Mountain Resort and Powder Mountain. And these projects are important just because they are similar in topography with hillside development. And so his experience is very valuable in what we're trying to do at Summit Creek. Mike Carlton is our civil engineer, and he also has extensive experience with hillside development. He's also worked on Red Ledges and Victory Ranch, along with just, you know, multiple single-family home projects on sloped topography as well. And then Rex McGuire is our developer consultant. He has extensive experience as well in the, in the development world, real estate development, over 25 years working with different Fortune 500 real estate development companies, different roles in land acquisition and titlement, heavy civil infrastructure installation and home building. So anyways, we're just super excited and happy that they're part of the team. And their input is really valuable as we talk about, you know, our overall development. And so anyways, we thought what we do is Eric, as our land planner, would be we'd like to have him start off, and Jody, I don't know if you can let Eric share his screen.
I think I can.
So yeah, with that, I'll turn the time over to Eric then, to kind of go through our overall master plan and present that to you, then we just want to have a discussion and answer any questions.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, I've got two monitors going, so I never know if Zoom's cooperating or not. So we're really here to talk about our current plan and, and really focus on the amendment to our preliminary plat. And so the preliminary plat that I have pulled up is, is what we have been working from to date. And what you'll see on here is, is a variety of, you know, a lot of the lots and the, and the roads that are built through Summit Creek Drive here and around the amenity center through here, as well as some of the future development that you guys are probably all pretty familiar with this plan. But what we're really here to talk about is our proposal and how it varies from this plan. And so we'll walk through all of the, all of the components of that, of that current plan. Now, the one thing I will warn you is when I pull up the plan, which I think a lot of you have seen, it's rotated the other way, because we, we laid it out like we do ski, ski resorts, so that the topography goes up the hill. So north, just so you know, north is down, and just to orient everybody, the, the existing clubhouse is right here, if you guys can all see my cursor, the existing overlook building at the entry here on the, on the north end of the project, and then the existing Summit Creek Drive moving up the hill through, through the middle of the project here. So as we've gotten into this redo or kind of re-envisioned for this, this new plat, this new master plan, we really focused on making sure that the layout, you know, responded to the topography as best it could. What we saw in the old plat where there were some, some spots that we felt like maybe we, they were pushing lots a little too much, and so the reality is we actually pulled back a little bit. And when we did that, we, we've gone from about 114 lots down to 104 now, plus or minus. But what I would say is that this, I think, is definitely a case where less is more. And the fact that these 104 lots, plus or minus, are actually going to be more valuable in the end than those 114 were, because they're bigger, they're surrounded by more open space. Just to give you a sense on the plan, this entire area down through here was lotted out and had roads, and, and we looked at it and said, that, that's an area that we can add open space in and provide value, not only to Summit Creek as a development, but to Woodland Hills as, as a whole. And so we're, we're estimating somewhere around 20 acres of open space in that location will be, will be, will be preserved. The, the open space, you know, being, being a big part of that, the reduction in the lot size, you know, we think are all positives that, that, that everybody's gonna, gonna realize. The, the third thing is that all of our roads on the previous plat were proposed as private roads. But those roads were proposed as 32 feet of a right-of-way, and we have worked through this plan and are proposing that the roads through the project still remain private, but that we are proposing that they go to the 60, 56-foot public right-of-way standard. Now, the only caveat to that is with that wider road and with this hillside development, we would be proposing a slightly reduced front setback for buildings, so that what ultimately will do is it'll keep, keep the homes from being pushed as far down the hill, degrading, retaining walls, et cetera, whatever's required to build those homes and keep them closer to the road. And in the end, we're still providing much more snow storage, landscape buffer, and, and just much less disturbance on the hillside. So we think that, again, this is, this is a real win-win for the project. The, the road circulation, as I mentioned, we pulled a bunch of the roads out of this location. And then we are proposing to make a road connection that doesn't exist today, generally in this location up to Eagle Nest Drive. And then at the same time, are proposing to not connect Bear Hollow here to Summit Creek, or we're also not proposing to connect Loafer through to Bear Hollow here. Part of that is, is one, is, is to, to make the connectivity better, a better flow, we think, through here, but also to disconnect a little bit onto Summit Creek Drive. We think that fewer access points onto that road is, is going to increase, increase the overall amount of safety. So little, little considerations, I will say Bear Hollow, this, this easement, this road right now does have utilities in there, so we would preserve those utility easements. And obviously it'd be a no-build zone, so there's no issues as far as utility changes or disruptions would go there. With all of this, and all the things that I've said, pulling these roads out, you know, making these connections flow much better, and working with Mike Carlton to ensure that we're, you know, meeting all the, all the necessary codes. All in all, we feel like this is just a much better fire access plan that, that can serve these lots, much more billable roads, much more accessible lots, start to finish. And we think that that, again, is, is a huge benefit to, to this project, as well as, as the city as a whole, really putting that, that issue at the, at the forefront.
Eric, can I ask you a question real quick? So I know I've seen this map before, but, so I don't know what this, I can't, it's not big enough for me to see what the, the intersection here with a little bit of yellow half, you know, three quarters of the way up, yeah. So is that the only exit for all of these homes on this far side?
No, so this, with this connection up Eagle Nest, it would connect up, and I can't remember the name, this road up here on the and so there would, that connection exists, and by us making the connection here, we would have those two points, and then we also have a fire access, emergency access that would exist right through here, which is, which is on kind of a, a platform that I think exists today, so
Yeah.
we would have three points of access.
Okay, I was just, when I, I, I saw the one at the top, but I thought, no, not, not very many people are going to drive up to get out. So, so I thought that that might be a really busy intersection there, but, and then, so I, I forgot about the fight, the emergency access that would be probably, is that a dirt road then, proposed?
I, I think the minimum is a, is, I think it's 16 feet of asphalt. So we're actually proposing, it would be an emergency road, but we, it would be part of our trail system. You know, 99.5% of the time, it would be used by hikers and bikers.
All right, thanks. And also, can we get a copy of all of the slides that you show us this evening?
Yes, for sure, yeah. The other thing I would point out about that, and I think that's a great question, and thank you, Kerry, is, is that what this intersection is, is, is a four-way intersection that we think is a much safer, recognizable intersection along Summit Creek, and it lines up with, with Loafer that will be connected through there eventually. So we think that that as, as our main entrance in here, again, cleaning up, you know, kind of these mid, mid, mid-block accesses, so to speak, is, is a, is a benefit. And that, you know, the opportunity to really make this a more pronounced intersection is, is there. The, I'm gonna go to the next slide, and then I'll come back. Well, actually, let me, let me, why are we talking about that? So back to the preliminary plan, if you look at this and you look closely, you can see potential gates identified on this, on this project. And if you count them up, and I won't mark them all out, this one, which is existing, which is a little further down the road on Summit Creek, and then the one on the south end of Summit Creek, plus all the others equal 11 potential gates on the old preliminary plat. And what we are proposing is, there are actually three, oops, sorry, there are actually three that exist, the two on Summit Creek, and then the one right here on Aspen. Those three exist, and that we are proposing five more to bring the total to eight. And so we're actually bringing the number down from 11 to eight. Part of that is just the consolidation of these access points and cleaning up and making those much more, much more clean. So those are noted here with, with kind of that orange that you noted, Kerry. Two of those would be access points into our, our expanded amenity center as well. And I know that you guys have seen our proposal in here, and I know it's gone through the approvals, and, but I do want to touch on, on this part. You know, this is a big part of our kind of re-envisioned, or revised preliminary plat is, is to expand this amenity center to include tennis and pickleball and bocce ball, and some additional parking, playground next to the, next to the pool and the pool house, so.
Is there any plan for a restaurant of any sort? I thought I had heard of that at one point.
I don't believe so, Ben, I don't know if you're, Bucky. Yeah, I think it's more, you know, just, just catered event, food service type, but not a drive-up-and-set-down-type restaurant.
Kerry, we, we did, we talked about that at one point in time, just trying to figure out how to get some commercial stuff up into the city. And once we took a look at just the layout and some other things, it just didn't, wasn't practical. So I think we've, we've gone over to that more catering model that, you know, that can kind of work versus, versus having a full restaurant up there, so.
Well.
That's kind of where that is.
For all of us, but yeah, it's business, so, thanks.
The, the last item I wanted to touch on, and it goes back to, you know, I think the, the conversations that we've heard about the integration with this project and Woodland Hills, and, and the fact that, you know, this open space that we're adding, we feel that if you see the red, red lines in here, we are proposing about three and a half miles of public trails, which, you know, I don't know that any other development in Woodland Hills has trails through the project. These, again, are, are proposed to be open to the public. We're, we're proposing to create some nodes along those trails that, that all members of Woodland Hills, and honestly, anybody that, that, you know, drives, drives up here and wants to access them can. And the idea that, you know, we would do some, some fun things along there, like a treehouse. This is actually one at Victory Ranch, it's super, super popular, nothing fancy, but, but really fun. You know, maybe a little lost library, you know, I live in Sugar House, and all, a bunch of our neighbors have those little kiosks with the book and, books in them. We picture something like that, maybe just a little bit, you know, more substantial, but really to kind of set the trail experience off, you know, maybe some ponds with, with, with some benches, and, and maybe it's just getting to, you know, a spot on the hill that has a fantastic sun, sunset view, and, you know, putting a bench up. You know, we think that this is something that can really integrate this project with, with the rest of the city. And I think focusing, you know, our efforts on working with the city to make these trails connect to other future trail master plans and, and trailheads. I know there's, I think people probably use the water tank as a trailhead and access that trail, and just trying to understand how we can, we can make this a cohesive, cohesive project through our trail system and our open space.
I appreciate you mentioning that, because I think that is an important aspect of, of having a whole city vision with, with your development within that, our, our entire city, so thank you.
And Eric, if, if I could, I'm not sure you're aware, I know Steve is, but we, we do have a Parks and Trails Committee in the city, and it would be probably a, a fun and a good idea, maybe coordinate. They might have some ideas that would be helpful and just to help them understand, I think, would be, help the council to get better advice from them, so just to give you a heads up on that.
Yeah, and I think that's great, and what we've tried to do is, you know, understand, you know, we need to create some points that, you know, say these neighbors here can walk down the street and then access a trail through this open space. There are some existing trails down here, but, you know, exactly what you're saying is working with neighbors then to extend those trails, or, or, you know, create loops or, or other opportunities. And it's also something, we've done a lot of work in Summit County, and one of the things they did a long time ago was that their Parks and Rec district, Basin Rec, was actually reviewed every plat that came through to determine if they thought, you know, there were trail connections that were needed, so that that, that step didn't get missed. So, you know, I think we're, we're super excited about that opportunity to, you know, to make this a citywide system.
Yeah, I think you'll find some huge advocates on that committee, too, for anything like this.
They're more popular than, yeah, they're more popular than any other amenity.
One of the things that they're in the process of doing is writing some grants to help build trails and that type of thing. And so it, it might be interesting, as Paul suggested, and coordinating with them, because there's, there's matches and that kind of stuff that needs to be done. And so it'd be interesting to, to see if, if there's some, some linkage there that we can enjoy.
Yeah, that'd be great. We actually, on the Mayflower Mountain Resort project, actually got, I can't remember, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of grant trails out there, and it's, it goes a long way.
Wayne Franzen here, Eric.
Hi Wayne.
There's, with your existing trails that you have, there's been a reluctance on the part of Summit Creek to welcome others to use those trails. Are you suggesting now that as part of your overall plan, that try to tie those trails into these new trails and, and open all that up then to, to Woodland Hills residents?
Yes, absolutely, and what I, what I always say is, you know, it's hard to make a trail truly private, because people are going to use them if they, if they want, really want to. I mean, even seen, I, I hate to say it, I had friends that used a private pool just because they hopped the fence and, and they could. So we think it's a huge plus, because, you know, it's, so yes, Wayne, quick, quick answer is yes, that's, that's the
Well, and can I extend that question even further? Because part of the challenge has been, quite frankly, the HOA insurance company. So my question would be, is the plan to actually deed those trails over to the city?
I, that's a good question, I think we'd have to think through that, and I don't know that I could answer tonight just from a legal standpoint, CCNRs, but I definitely have that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, just, and, and again, I, you, you'll find that I speak plainly, and, and I do that because I just want to make sure you understand the history, because, you know, we, we've been through this before, and it was actually part of the Mountain Villa overlay zone, as well as the approval, that the trails that exist would have been open to everyone, and then Summit Creek gets built, and we're told you have to stay out. So we've got to do more than what we did before for that to be accepted, if that makes sense. And again, I'm not trying to be mean about it, but we've been burnt, so you got it, and not by fire.
Yeah, Dave, yeah, well, close, but David, I, I tell you that if there's, if there was a communication that that was not a public trail, right, that was probably a miscommunication on our part, right? It, it, it should not have been that way, and if it is, you know, to your point, we've got to fix that. And I think, so if we, if we start to do a little bit more of a, a campaign saying that, you know, these are trails open to the city, we, we need to do a better job at that, because there, there, there shouldn't have been a restriction there. If there's, if there's something that we need to do with the insurance company, Buck, we need to go back and do that. I just wasn't aware of that, so.
I have an additional question. With that, then, will there, would there be an official trailhead? I mean, we have that with our switchback trails, and we have a cul-de-sac there where we allow some parking. And would there be an official trailhead with some parking? Or we don't want to upset residents with people coming and just parking on the street, and it, of course, is legal to park on a, on a regular main thoroughfare such as Summit Creek Drive. So how would we address that issue with the trails?
I would suggest that that's a bigger citywide discussion, as you mentioned, with the Parks and, and Trails division, just to understand, you know, because it is a tricky, tricky situation, where you want it to be safe, you want it to be, you know, accessible and, and not create an issue. And you also want it to be in the right spot for the right trail user, so, you know, I think that's definitely something that we can add, you know, into the discussion as we, as we dive into these trails a little further.
Yeah, I think that would be important, because people will come into the Summit Creek development and be looking to park, and I think that would be beneficial for the residents who live there, as well as the residents from, without, you know, from just within the regular city boundaries, to have a, a knowledge of where they can and cannot park.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and then David, you know, kind of to your point, I think we've got to figure out how, you know, if, if in fact, we, we deed those over to the city, how, how are they going to get maintained? I mean, who's, who's going to do that? So that, I think there's a little bit more investigation that we need to do as it relates to this, and I think your guys' suggestion that we need to get with the Trails Committee, right? And, and kind of figure that out, sort that out, I think it'll come through that process, so.
So, team, unless I forgot something, I think those were the high points that I wanted to hit, you know, really, again, just to kind of summarize, the trails, I think, in the open space are, are big, and, and again, backing up, all of these things, we feel are, are beneficial to not only Summit Creek, but, but Woodland Hills as a whole. You know, better, more accessible lots, the road widths are now going to meet, you know, the 56-foot right-of-way. Reduction of the number of gates, you know, the, the layout responding to the topography, and, and on and on and on, so. I appreciate those comments, I don't, Steve, or, or Ben, or, or Buck, or Rex, if you guys have any other things that I missed, or if we want to just kind of continue the discussion here.
So just one other thing, and again, I there, there's a lot of history between two issues, one is the trails, and then the other one is the gates. And in regards to both the gates, and I'm assuming that you're expecting that you would make all of the roads that are behind gates, private roads. So our existing ordinances don't allow either of those two things. Now, we know that we've broken that in the past, and not only do we regret it, but we've been told not to do it again. So what it would require, if we were to go down this path, is we would require ordinance changes in order to allow these two things to take place. So that means public hearing, Planning Commission public hearing, City Council public hearing. And, and so there, you know, it would be interesting to me how the rest of the residents feel about it. I think that's, that's something that we definitely want to get their input on, but I'm just letting you know that currently, what you're proposing can't be done.
Well, so David, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
Well, you go ahead, Steve.
I think, David, I, you know, granted, I'm not an attorney here, right? But I think the thing that we wanted to try to do was, you know, in, in theory, we've got the amended, we're, we're amending the existing approval, which has the private roads and the gates on it. Right, we're reducing the amount of private road, we're reducing the number of gates. But those, the gates in the preliminary plat have already been approved, right? Rightly or wrongly, they were approved, so I think that's the
Right.
That, that's, I guess, you know, I can't go any further than that, because, you know, other than
You can say, if we want to go down that rat hole again, we can.
Well, yeah, you, you, you're right, but I think that's, that's what we're trying to do, David, is amend the existing plat that we believe has those existing approvals on it, right, so.
So we're just basically in the discussion period, you're done with your presentation?
Yeah, yeah, if you have questions, or, yeah.
Yeah, great, yeah, I have some, and basically kind of following on what Dave's going down there. But first, I wanted to say, I really appreciate the partnership that we have with Summit Creek. I think you folks are, are a good team member, and, and I appreciate what you're doing for Woodland Hills, what you're doing for the larger community and that type of thing. And so please keep that in mind as, as I ask questions, because like Dave, I may be a little bit blunt in that, but it's, it's more probing than it is making a final decision. So my question is, on the private roads and the gates, what is it, and I'm kind of getting in the weeds, what, what is, what's in it for the regular citizens of Woodland Hills to have Summit Creek, to have private roads and gates? How, how does that help my neighbor?
You want me to speak to that, Steve? I mean, my, my personal opinion is that it increases, you know, where this project is located on the edge of, of Woodland Hills, we think that it just increases the safety within those, those residents that live within those gates. And, and quite honestly, it's also going to elevate the value of those properties a little bit, which in turn will create, you know, more tax base for the city. I mean, that's the two planning kind of principles that I, that I look at. I don't know if you guys have other thoughts, Steve, I know, and I am fairly new to this. I've been working with these guys for a couple of years, but, you know, definitely not new to, to the scenarios, so.
So I, I think the one, the one thing, Bob, is that as it relates to your neighbor outside there, right, there is no city maintenance required for any infrastructure on a private road, but yet you're getting the tax base for that infrastructure, as if it was, that's my understanding anyway.
Okay.
So, so therefore, you know, the city would have more money to spend on the existing city roads that way, I mean, that's something that we'd have to check with Chris.
I don't think that's correct.
Do they get the B and C road funds?
We don't on private roads.
Yeah, so, but to your point, Steve, I think you're. Partially right in that. You've still got the property values without the city needing to maintain the road in front of those properties. So I get that. We're just not getting the B and C road funds.
Okay.
And, and so then. So, so, so then, not only the roads, you also are responsible for. The water lines and the sewer lines and all of those things? Those, those are your property and not the cities?
No, those, those would, would remain the cities and the utilities, man.
Okay.
That's not my understanding. When we do those things, it's my understanding that those. The line would have to be, you know, if it needs to be replaced, it's, it's borne by those in the private. Subdivision there or behind the road. I think that might be something we want to ask Chris, but that was our understanding.
I, I think, Jody, I think you're correct. I think any, anything going down in a private road is, is not the responsibility of the city.
So, and so that, that's a value. A- as we experience replacing water lines right now. And, and so then, the state requirements to scope and and clean all of the sewer lines and that type of thing. Would also be those private citizens' responsibility, and so that's, that's going to save some money there.
And there, and, and Bob, the, the state requirement is for a reserve study to be done and for us to maintain reserves. In the HOA, in order to cover the, the maintenance of those. Projects over their life. And that's a requirement, that's a, that's a state law requirement that we have to do that every so often. I can't remember, it's two, two to three years. You know, Eric, you might know, or Mike, you might, so.
I, I thought that the scoping of the sewers was every five years, but I could be wrong.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the reserve study.
Oh, okay, reserve study, great, okay, thanks. Thanks for helping me there.
I think there needs to be a distinction made too, uniquely with the gates on Summit Creek Road. Versus the rest of the gates that you're proposing in the community. Summit Creek Road has kind of become a thoroughfare. It is a public road. And so it, it may need to be treated differently than. The private roads and gates in the rest of your community.
Yeah, Wayne, that's, that's a, that's a, a, a distinction that we do need to address, you're right, yeah.
But I still think we have to, to worry about and how to, how, how do we, if, if we decide that we want to go this way. How do we make it legal for the gates and the private roads? I think that's a significant hurdle. Based on what I know. My neighbors feel about those two issues. It, it, it may be a little bit less because it may not impact them. Because Summit Creek gates and road are public and so. It may, it may make it a little easier, but I still think it's a tall pole. And, and so, and I say that because I, you know, if, if we decide to go this way, and I, I don't know that we are. I haven't made up my mind. I'm, if anything, I'm kind of leaning against it, but. I need you guys to help sell me on the idea and right now, I'm. Not sure that it's the right thing for us to do. And so. You know, tha- that's kind of why I ask, you know, wha- what's in it for, what's in it for us? And, and there, there are some things there and we talked about some of those and I think those are very valid. And, and they, and they may tip the scale a little bit, but are there other things that, that we're not aware of? That, that maybe you can do some research on or that you already know about?
I, I think those are good points, Bob. The, the other one I think is that. You, you need to potentially take a look at is. What are the value of the gates to the potential new residents of Woodland Hills? And because that, those are the ones that will be more affected by the gates, because they're the ones that are. Going to be accessing the gates on a, on a regular basis. So while someone on the other side of Woodland Hills, they may or may not. You know, need to worry about the gates, where the people, you know, that are going to be living. On, you know, one of the other gates that does, you know, let, let's talk about Aspen Circle, for example, because I can't figure out what the name of the other roads are. The, the, the value, the value of those owners. That gate to those owners and those residents is really, really high. Right?
So, 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 let, let me share the con of that, and that is, is that what, what you're implying is. That we live in a. A higher crime area, therefore we need to have gates. Therefore, those that are within the gates are protected more than those that are without the gate. And therefore, I'm not as important because I don't have a gate to drive through. That's an implied message.
Yeah, it, it, it may be, it may be implied, it may be misconstrued, right, because I think the. I, I think the world is, is a little bit different and some people like the privacy behind it, not necessarily a security function. But maybe just a little bit more of the privacy. And. You know, if you go back to the city council minutes over the last, you know, last year. There were a lot of issues related to park, you know, people parking at the trailheads. And. And. You know, the sheriff having to be called, right, and, and Bob, I, I think we as Summit Creek need to. Talk about the fact that. Summit Creek is part of Woodland Hills and Woodland Hills, you know, it has Summit Creek as a, as a subdivision within it. And we need to work on that as Summit Creek to make sure that everybody feels included. You know, those residents in and those residents without. So I, I think that is more the message that. That we need to work on as, as developers, as opposed to. You know, you don't have a gate, so you're, you know, so you're some lesser citizen when, in reality. If they wanted, you know, if they want a gate, then they can have a property behind the gate and. So it gives you a little bit of a diversity in product too, and I mean, I think Eric can, you know, maybe talk to. You know, to that a little bit too, but I, I think your point is, we need to do a little bit of research and probably come back to you with. With some rationale and and some discussion points related to that.
And, and so basically what I'm suggesting is, is along that same line, and that is, is that. If. You, you, you've got to do a good job of marketing to us. Not only the, the Planning Commission and the City Council, but to us as a community that. These. Things are beneficial to us and so. So, so I guess that's the bottom line of, of my last couple of minutes here of talking is, is that you, you've got to sell me. You've got to sell my neighbor and so I, I would, you know, I would encourage you to do that. Because I think you've got a good plan here, but I'm not sure that it is. That, that the, the, the greater community of Woodland Hills is ready to buy that at this point. And so you, you've got to sell us.
Okay, I mean, and tha- and that's a fair point. I appreciate the feedback on that.
Thanks.
Another thought too, along with selling it, I know there's been discussion, but. I just put it out there as we're having this meeting. Possibly other Woodland Hills residents is sharing in a portion of HOA fees that are used to maintain the swimming pool. Or maybe the tennis court and allowing those who want to pay into a fund. To enjoy the benefits of those besides the Summit Creek residents. Again, I don't know how it would be received, but just a thought as, as we go forward and looking to try to. Bring, bring the communities together a little bit more.
That, that's a great point, Wayne.
And if I may, my, my, my concerns are more practical, Steve, in the sense that. Uh, right now, we don't allow private roads and there can't be gates on public roads. So Dave brought this up earlier, but just, just the obstacles, you know, what, what steps need to be taken, that'd be. Helpful to kind of roadmap that and just say, okay, well, we have to, we, we'd have to do this, we'd have to do that, here would be a public meeting here and on, on this issue. I, I don't have a good sense of what it would take. I'm actually inclined, I'm more of the opinion that I don't mind if. Those in, in Summit Creek, because they're willing to pay for it. Have some special benefits that I don't enjoy, I, that's fine. I, I would support that because I'm not willing to pay for it. If they are, great, let them enjoy that. But I just want to know practically, if we did want to go that direction, how would we get from point A to point B? Really good point in, in trying to figure out, because I think the, the clearer that. That the people on the phone, all of us included, right, City Council, Planning Commission and, and us. Can. Articulate and know what the path is. Then I think we can all work together toward that common goal of making the city a be- a great place, right? And Summit Creek being a, a, an addition to that. But I think that way we can do that. That especially in, you know, this is where I get to with Jody, right? Calendering stuff out so that we can make sure that we've got the Planning Commission approvals and the. You know, on the right dates and that we've got public hearings where we need them on the right dates and that they're properly noticed and. That we're giving, you know, the residents, the, the opportunity to. Hear the feedback and understand any concerns that they've got so that we can really truly at the end of this project. Make sure that, you know, we've got a gem inside the city of Woodland Hills. And, uh, and that. Everybody knows how we got there and, and where we're taking something that was. You know, raw ground before and making it truly a, a great part of the, the city that all the residents are comfortable with, so.
Yeah, and that's part of my, uh, my, what, what I would call the tentacles to this marketing plan is both what Paul. Uh, brought up and what Wayne brought up. I think those are all tentacles that at least need to be addressed. And, and, and the proper business and, uh, cultural and inclusion. Uh, philosophies applied.
Steve, in the past, there has not been a great deal of participation. By Summit Creek residents in public hearings. Now, maybe they don't have any interest in it, in the things, I, I don't know. But something like this, if we were to go forward and have public hearings. We would certainly want to hear from residents of Summit Creek as to their views on if there's. Consideration to private roads and gates and so forth. Rather than just hearing, uh, you know, from the rest of the city. So I just, again, bring that to your attention. The process is a fairly simple one though. But i- it can be complex with the decisions that are made, but. The Planning Commission would have a public hearing for comment. And would, based on that, would make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing as well. For continued public input. And then the City Council would need to decide on changing the ordinance. That's, that's what it would take in order to. Not be going against our ordinances. So that there wasn't any conflict, but the ordinances would need to be changed and there's not a. There's not a big change that would need to be made with them, just a few words here and there that would allow what, what. What you're proposing, so.
Okay. I appreciate that, Wayne, you know, it's, uh, I thought you were going to say that you wanted more residents of Summit Creek to come to the City Council and Planning Commissions, just so you didn't have to hear me talk anymore.
Hey, Steve, I will say this, so Jody actually just sent us the, this plan in, in the document. And. I will say, I will say I very much appreciate. You know, a lot of the conversations that we had with you and we had with Bucky. About not making Summit Creek Drive look like a cell block with gate, 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 gate going down the road. You know, this plan does that, so I very much appreciate you listening to that feedback.
You know, I'm, I'm trying, David.
Again, if we can, if we can. Address and get the city residents buy off. On this plan. You know, again, I, I'm kind of with Paul, I, I can't afford it. But I don't mind those that can and they're really good neighbors too, so, anyway.
I, I think that the cr- part of the crux is, is what you talked about, Steve, and that is, is that. Uh, inclusion part of not separate from, I, I think that's part of the, the, the marketing that, that needs to be done.
Lori, you're brand new to this. Any, any thoughts? You know, I'm. She's looking for unmute button, so I think that's awesome, so.
Um, I feel like because I'm new, I, I'm not familiar enough to. Pass my judgment, but I do have to agree with the inclusion. Of the existing, you know, residents in the old part. I also have some questions about. Do we still worry about lot sizes in, in the new development? Is there still the one acre minimum?
Yeah, and, and Lori, that's probably something that I think that it would be good for you to visit with Ben. And give you, he can give you a little bit of the history on this and what we're trying to do, maybe get you up to speed a little bit. Faster, you know, maybe outside of, of this meeting. I, I think it would be good for you to meet Ben and. And, uh, and if we need to, we can get Eric and Mike, you know, in touch with you and kind of walk through each one of the. Those other, other areas, at least. So that's my thoughts. Mike, Eric, Ben, any thoughts on how we can help Lori?
I'd be happy to sit down, Laura. I know COVID makes that challenging, or, you know, we could plan the next Planning Commission meeting. If there's in person, I could come. In person there.
And also, Lori, just to remember, because this was such a large piece of property, then. The ordinances are different for a development of this size and so they have the ability to have some smaller and in some larger. Overall density has to remain the same, but lot sizes can change based on. The types of lots and where they're at.
Um, so I, I had a question and I hesitated to ask it because it has the word codification in it.
Way to, way to be the Debbie Downer, Ben.
Right, sorry.
Thanks, Ben.
I just.
Psychological reactions right now.
So. As, if I look at Title XI. And I pull it from the city website where it has what's crossed off and then in red, kind of what's changing. In Title XI, what's crossed out, you know, says private streets may be permitted, but you know, it's crossed out. Does crossed out mean that it's been a, voted on and approved, or that's in the process of being approved?
No, that's a good question. So when it has been crossed out, that's because. And I, I mean. You, you understand this very well, the blowback we got back last summer. It's because what had happened, and I, again, I don't want to. Point fingers or make anyone feel bad. Because what was, what the plan originally was for codification was to try and bring our codes. Up to where we were as far as current practices and at that time. We did have gates, we did have a few private roads. And so that language was. Added to Title XI. To basically bring us in conformance with where we were. Well, residents kind of blew back on that and said, wait a minute, you never passed an ordinance to allow that. So you can't put that in there and so it was taken out. And that's what that red line means, is that that was not passed via ordinance, so it was removed. Okay, Wayne, do you have any additions to that?
No, but the plan was at that time was to seek its approval as part of the overall codification. And then when we got the blowback from it, we tried to take things as much as we could back to our existing ordinances. Realizing that we still may need to make changes, but we will do that after we get the, the, the codification in place.
So, okay.
Did you understand?
Yeah, I think so. So the, the public hearing on the twenty-third. To discuss Title XI is to get feedback. On changing that back to what's in red.
No. It, it's to, it's just to go forward with the codification essentially with our, the way our existing ordinances are stated.
Okay.
So you're looking at the version that has the red line in it. There is another version on the website that is the clean copy. And it does not have that text in it, or better not. And that's because it was removed, but what we also wanted to do is. And that's because it was removed, but what we also wanted to do is provide the red line version so that residents could see what got removed, what got changed, what got taken away.
I also just my guess is might bring this up too. How does the Mountain Villa overlay zone play into this? Cause there are some there is some language in that overlay zone that does allow for gates, just not across public roads. And that might be a deeper discussion, but anyways, that was something that uh, yeah, I'm not sure how that plays in.
Well, in essence, there are no sensor, no private roads allowed by ordinance. There's no gates allowed either by ordinance. So those are kind of tied in with one another. Now, we're talking about gates, we're talking about closed gates. Cause gates are allowed as a architectural feature. It it says that in the overlay zone. So you can have gates aesthetically looking, but they can't be closed. So that's written within the ordinance. So there's a lot of amenities with the Mountain Villa overlay zone that was intended, in fact, it was written primarily for your for your subdivision there. There's no other subdivision in the city that carries that overlay zone. It could, but basically it's the R one nineteen. And then the overlay zone allows certain amenities, certain exceptions, certain adjustments and that sort of thing to the regular R one nineteen zone.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Comments? I know that
I have a question.
Yeah, Severn, please.
We had a presentation in the planning commission some months ago about uh doing raised intersections. Now, is that now gone from the plan?
Eric, you wanna?
Yeah, I think what I recall was the discussion was thrown out there to to talk about traffic calming. And I think that we are still, I I guess because it's a public road, we are are kind of looking, I I think we're open to working with the city on what makes the most sense. I think we we kind of got some feedback that maybe snow removal wasn't so friendly on those raised crosswalks. Um, but I I think that we would be open to having that discussion on the city's ideas to help help with the traffic calming, whether it's a stop sign or two, maybe at that four way intersection that I was talking about or you know, these raised platforms. We're definitely open it, you know, knowing that it's a a public road is is ultimately this, you know, the city's probably bigger, bigger call.
Don't they have some of those raised platforms that are put in with bolts that could remove be removed during the winter and reinstalled in the spring?
Yeah, I've seen those. I I think they look not so good.
Okay, okay, that that's a good answer.
Yeah, and and I think there's ways to do, you know, I live on a a road that's they've added the raised crosswalks and while they're just speed bumps, but what happens is if they're not done right, they actually create more of an issue in my opinion. Um, but I've also seen some, cause what'll happen is everybody slows down for the bump and then they speed up till the next one and they end up
And and I was thinking that the wider on the top would be better than the
That's exactly what I was gonna say, Bob. If we can make them you know, the right size, or you want to make them impactful, but we don't want them to be so so abrupt. And that's where the snow we're plow, snowplow guys have issues, I think.
Yeah, a- and I'm concerned about the speeds on Summit Creek and so I, whatever we can do there to help reduce that, I think is very important.
One of the things I was thinking with that is um, a lot of the cities are now putting in um signage that is like solar powered, so that if you are coming, instead of always having to have that little trailer there from the from the sheriff's office, it's just an automatic. And then when people, cause I think people really aren't intending to speed, you're just a lots on your mind, you left your house and you're going to town. And so you're thinking of all those things you have to do. And so that might be something that would be easy for Summit Creek to put in some sort of a signage that, you know, just flashes, just to remind people they, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then they slow down. Just an idea on that, but with this entire presentation, I wanted to say thank you for all of all of you coming to the table. I mean, we didn't hear from from Rex or Mike, but um you know, we have had the opportunity to meet with Ben and talk with Steve quite a bit and Bucky through the years and we want this to be a successful development as well. Um, as we have learned some lessons from previous developers who who weren't always as engaging as as you have been. And so although we do bring up a lot of concerns because we represent the constituents of our city, which you know, are from here to here, there, as you've come to our city council meetings, you know that there's not always a lot of consensus. And so we bring up those concerns uh because we do represent them and but we appreciate you coming to the table and bringing us with you and being willing to work through those and and continue the dialogue. So thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. I appreciate that.
I have a second question.
Yes.
What the recognizing that Summit Creek is a public road? What specifically will be the status of the two gates, the one up at the top near the Woodland Hills Drive and one down at the bottom on Summit Creek?
Yeah, so I think that's you know, part of the discussion right now is right there, they're uh they're open, right? They're remaining open right now. I mean, I, you know, I I think just based on our planet, ideally, we'd like for them to be closed, right? Just because it's part of that development, but it's on a public road and so they can't. So that's just part of this discussion, something we have to work out as we work through this entire overall master plan.
And I think one of my concerns is that Summit really now for me, who lives up on the top of Lofer Drive is really the emergency exit to get out so that not everybody in the upper part of Woodland Hills is all going down Woodland Hills Drive.
Yeah, I I think Severn, even if the gates were closed, they they should be open when any car pulls up. So there there there's no restriction on openers or codes or anything else like that. Even the gates we're proposing, you know, I I don't think have that if I if I'm correct, Eric, but you know, Severn, that that they should be open to anybody that pulls up. So if there was an emergency exit and you had to get out, it it should put, you know, the gate should open when you go in. And I think Buck reminded me, but I think there's a back battery backup on those gates, right? To go and open and then it releases.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, if if power's cut and the power goes out, there's battery backup, the gates will automatically open.
I'm sorry, but I have to leave now. Uh, but again, I I appreciate you guys. And again, just as Carrie mentioned, we and Dave and I mentioned earlier is is that um you guys are good partners and we we appreciate that and want to continue to work and and help you be successful because that's part of us being successful. So thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I I too need to leave uh for some reason, we just is that this is just a Zoom night meeting and so I need to go and present at another event. So um, thank you again, and uh I'm sure this will be uh an ongoing discussion for a while, depending on when you petition the city uh for some of your requests, which of course go to the planning commission before it comes to the council. But reach out anytime and and I know we can reach out to you, so thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Good luck with your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Let me, let me ask you a question, another one. What changes in this concept plan that you're you've kind of presented tonight? If there are no private gates or private roads? Are, would that change your road configuration or your your layout that you're looking at or considering? Uh, what's, what is the effect of if that were to to be the case? Is the elephant in the room?
No, I, you know, I I'll just speak bluntly, which I appreciate everybody, you know, I don't know why there's any other way to speak, but you know, our roads are are based on topography, not necessarily gate locations. You know, we we think that, you know, pulling the Bear Hollow access off of Summit Creek is beneficial. Uh, not because we didn't want to put a gate there, but it was because that just, you know, made more sense as we as we talked about. But the roads and the access points, you know, Mike Carlton makes them all meet city code for slopes and and angles and access and 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 the gates don't really impact that. I I think you know, maybe the the only thing is is really just, you know, the opportunity to to uh, you know, create uh a project that that can you know, contribute just a little more to, you know, to to the city. So I I don't, I don't think that it's anything physically on on where things go.
Okay.
Wayne, I, but let me let me add something and, you know, we we haven't talked about this as as a group, but there there's things that may need to change just because the investment that we've put into Summit Creek relies on that preliminary plot that we've got the approval on that has the gates. And so there's there there would have been a different investment level and an in different investment concentration without the gates, right? It would have been a different project from from the start. Without having the gates, would we have done the amenity center the way that we did? Probably not. Right, it it the the center would have been dramatically different and we wouldn't have probably put millions of dollars into some of the infrastructure that we did. So that that would be something that we would have to reevaluate i- if if that's the case. Because while Eric's talking about the roads may not be different, the project may entirely have to be different because we may need to go to some higher density stuff in order to try to get a different type of a return on it. So that we can make the money back because right now, you know, the project we're hoping to, you know, to break even on. But you know, we changed that, then it's a uh, it's a different story for us.
Okay, I I can understand that.
Yeah.
And 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 this is the reason for my question on it. If you're interested in wanting us to go forward, which I I assume you are, uh to have the required public hearings and and consider changing our ordinances to to allow uh private roads and gates. And that that seems to be the likely the biggest issue that they're facing with in in looking at this proposal. If we can, we can get copies of this and and uh present that then into uh public hearing and and go forward with it and make a decision on it. I mean, that this I just didn't want, I guess my concern was if let let's say in your case, the worst case scenario, the city council decides not to allow them, what what changes or adjustments would need to be made to this? And as you indicated, there may be some relocation of lots and trying to maybe have smaller lots in some places and rather than the larger ones to try to economize things or work it, work it to your advantage. And I certainly understand that. But uh, I I didn't want to, I I don't want you to have a, do a whole lot of work and with all this layout and then the city say no, and then you have to go back to the drawing board. I I think we're better off to, let's go forward with this and and do what needs to be done with the with the proposal in mind that that's what we're working towards so that you can then do your further planning based upon whatever the decision is that the council would make. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and and I think that's some wise counsel, Wayne. Yeah, it's uh there there's some wise counsel there that I think we need to consider.
I have a question. Are we required to change the city ordinances to re to allow gates if the area has already been approved?
Yes, we are. There's one, there's just one, well, there's actually, I think, two roads have been approved as private roads. So that won't change those, those are there. But then to to uh in to enlarge this and do it properly, I I know that maybe the city would be facing issues if the city council decided to not allow private roads and gates. When in initial presentation of this several years ago, they said it was acceptable. So we have that issue, we'd rather not come to that point. Uh, but to to enlarge the number of private roads and gates, uh the ordinance does need to be changed.
Okay.
That that's a good question, Lori. I think we need to, you know, maybe dig into that and and understand that that issue. So it's a very, very astute. For your second meeting, that's pretty awesome, Lori.
Okay, I have another question. Are all of the gates, all eight gates that you have planned, would they all open as a car approaches regardless? Or is that something you would want to change to keep the area more secure?
The, I would assume on on the private roads that they would, they would not open automatically. Would have a, you'd have a passcode or, but I I don't, we haven't really had that conversation, I guess.
I think they'd have to have something for fire purposes.
Yeah, the fire, the fire guys always have an override. And then if if nothing else fails, they just knock it down, so. But uh, that we can, we can get that. Lori, we can get that um answer back to you for for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
We're all letting Mike Carlton off pretty easy from the engineering standpoint, so.
No questions.
You all get your spot, you all get your ability to knock me was when we come back through with the actual plan, so. Just to be quiet tonight.
Yeah, Mike, what what, you know, the, I I do want to talk a little bit about just the the road width change. Eric had highlighted it a little bit. You know, earlier. But the 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 layout now follows the the city guidelines for the wider roads for uh for fire access, right? Fire and emergency access, is that correct?
Yeah, well, it it just matches their um current roadway cross section that's the standard.
So so we're not asking for a variance on on that, so. David, we're trying to do a little bit better there, okay? So.
Here's the issue too, that you potentially would run into twenty, thirty years from now. If you want to uh turn these over to the city, uh the city rightly could reject them because the roads are not wide enough and don't meet the city standard. Where if you make them according to city standard now, then that does not become an issue. Should it ever be one in the future?
That's a, that's a good point, Wayne, so.
Yeah, you make a good point because in in every jurisdiction that I've ever worked in that we did private roadways, the city was very careful to require them to be built to the public standard. That all testing take place on the materials, that the the fill being used for the roadways was was up to this, the public standard. Just in case that would happen, I mean, it, you're gonna find every developer saying, oh, no, it's it's never gonna happen when they come to you originally. But that's an insurance policy for the city. It's it's something that that it it's what you're asking for is not out of the the ordinary at all.
So so Mike, would that, would that go through the same approval, just as if we were building a public road with Corbett's approval and all that kind of other stuff?
Yes. Okay, yeah, because we we want to make sure or they want to make sure that should something happen one day and they have to take the road for whatever reason, that they know what they're starting off with to begin with.
And that that includes water, sewer, all that stuff. So Corbett would be involved in that no matter what.
Correct.
Okay.
And LEI.
And yeah, and and LEI. And yeah, and, and LEI, obviously.
One other comment I remember from the ordinances. That there is a limit of a thousand feet for a cul-de-sac. Have we got any of these cul-de-sacs that are longer than a thousand feet?
No, so the, uh. The cul-de-sac, this, this one actually is, is the longest, uh, but it has that emergency access that comes out to Summit Creek here. So everything else loops and I think, and I can't remember, Mike, that I think this is still at a thousand feet. Uh, max. And then it goes, and then we still have that secondary access out of there. That, if, definitely.
How about Bear Hollow?
Yeah, it's, it's well shorter.
This, seven, you're, you're talking about Bear Hollow with, if we're turning that into a cul-de-sac, is that?
Yeah, it's, it's still under a thousand feet.
Right, correct.
So I don't see a legend on this drawing. So I'm going to presume that the blue, uh, circles are new proposed lots.
No, just to clarify, the, the, the yellow circles with numbers on them are either already platted. Uh, and owned by Summit Creek and, and for sale. Uh, the blue are just future. Anticipated that, but we just haven't gone into the final, final design, uh, stage on that. So just to separate the two.
Okay, and so with those new ones, they would. How do I say this? That, that it could change.
Yeah, so when we, yeah, when we got, what we would do is get, uh, detailed survey, design and, and find two. But we think they're, it will, it'll change five or 10%, not 50%.
Yeah.
There's, there's one area I wanted to make. Yeah, David, just, just a clarifying thing. Eric, can you talk about the, the circle that we're doing with, with G1, right? I think it is. If you go up, yeah, right there, that area, David, they're not blue, but those haven't been plotted yet either. We're, we're, we're trying to amend that, that area.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear, so.
Yeah, they are in the process. They, they have been submitted. I don't know, Mike, if, if you want to talk about where that status of those lots are real quick.
Uh, yeah, we were asked to actually come back with a larger preliminary, uh, plan, which is kind of necessitated this meeting. Um, that the city did not want to go forward with the preliminary of just that G1 area.
Without seeing the whole thing, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, the, the idea was to, to. All the remaining development area, get that all approved as one whole on the preliminary level. Um, just to kind of check that box and then we would go through and do final approvals on each, on individual chunks like that G1 area.
Now, are, are you all remembering too that the Mountain Villa overlay zone requires? A certain number of smaller clustered lots and homes. So don't, don't overlook that in your overall plan because that's a requirement of the overlay zone.
Yeah, I believe it's, I believe it's ten, uh, Wayne, and we have ten smaller lots down by the amenities inside that zone.
I'm not sure those qualify, but let's talk about that further. Look at, look at that, uh. Entitled 11, because that's, that's not changing, that's been existent. Look at that and see if. If, if you, if you are okay, uh, as that is written, uh, in going forward and continuing to plat lots as you have.
Okay. And then Ben, can you, can you reach out to Wayne? And, and I think Wayne's probably the expert on the Mountain Villa overlay zone. Let's, let's make sure that we've got his insight on that when we take a look at this.
Yep, for sure.
And one other thing I'm just gonna mention.
You know, it also looks like.
Uh, eh, you want to go ahead Severin, then I, I'll take next.
Okay, I was just saying it looks like in that same area, you may have a flag lot, which is not appropriate.
In, in which area Severin?
In G1.
Well, it's, it's coming at that, that area that you were circling a little while ago.
Right here?
Right in that area, in that right now, exactly. I don't know whether that's gotten frontage, it's required even in R19.
Yeah, so Eric, we'll, we'll have to, or Mike, we'll have to look at that just to make sure that. We've got, I think we checked that at one point, if I remember right, in one of our prior conversations, but.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't get off mute. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, but I, I think we talked about that. It has more frontage there than you think, but we'll, we'll double check that.
Are you talking about 216 Severin?
I can't see what the number is.
Let, Eric, put your cursor over that lot again, unless, let's.
It's this one right here.
To the right, that one, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's 216.
Yeah, so Severin, the, the access to that actually goes down toward the circle down below.
Yeah, here.
So there is, we think that there's enough frontage down on there, on that road.
I mean, in the other part, there was the road through there, as I remember. There used to be a road through there off of Bear Hollow.
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, so we're proposing to eliminate that connection and actually place a trail through there that connects into this. Open space corridor down the middle that would help connect this entire southern part of the, uh. The old Thousand Oaks Plats, uh, into the open space. You can see that red, that red dash line through there.
What will the trails be made of? Are they asphalt?
No, I don't, I don't think we see any, well, the only, the only portion of the trail that would be asphalt is that portion that was also the secondary access. Uh, with the topography out here, um. This, the soft trail is the way to go and from a long-term maintenance and cost standpoint and, and. You know, the width of trails that we're talking here, usually if you get a, a trail that's six or eight or 10 feet wide, you might do a, an asphalt or a, a mix. Uh, but with the topography on a lot of these trails, you know, we see these being much narrower, you know, two to four feet, kind of a single track. Um, native trails, which long-term are just way more usable. Um, it's more of a hiking trail than a, than a kind of a commuter trail.
Wide enough for a turkey migration, isn't that what you said, Eric? Isn't that what?
That wasn't me, that was probably Rex.
So.
At, at least they got, at least they got a little bit of a smirk out of David, right? So.
To that point, um, yeah, you, you definitely did, because I'm not kidding, up in the tree outside my house, I've probably got 20 turkeys up. Thirty, forty feet roosting right now. Hey, so I, I apologize for bringing this up yet again. But it's probably my greatest regret with the Summit Creek Road and. And that is, as you see, um, Elk Ridge, you see Payson, you see Spanish Fork, all building these. Secondary trails, um. Yeah, for bikes. And they really are kind of becoming the thing. And I just keep dreaming that somehow, some way we'd be able to get. This nice loop between, um, you know, the Payson Trails, going all the way up Summit Creek Drive and then coming down Woodland Hills Drive. Now, I know Woodland Hills Drive's not your problem and in many ways Summit Creek isn't either. But I'm telling you, that is. Anyway, that's something that I really wish we had and, you know, when I, when we came and. Talked with the residents of Summit Creek, you know, a lot of them talked about trying to walk along Summit Creek Drive and just how incredibly dangerous that was. So, you know, I'm thinking, man, if we had that trail that we should have had because it was in our general plan even before, but we didn't. Hold, hold, not you guys, it was the previous guys, um, to it. But anyway, I just want to throw that out there and see if there's any like. Desire to do something like that.
David, is that, is that mountain bike, road bike, walking, what?
Yeah, it's, it's actually in our current general plan now.
Well, I'm, I'm just talking from a general standpoint. I don't know the loop because I'm not down there trying to figure out what they're doing on biking. Right? I, is it a mountain bike trail? Is it a mount?
No, it's, it's a road bike trail. It's meant as a secondary commuter trail. So it would be, it would be asphalted and, uh, again, you, you look at what they just did, um, between. Salem and, uh, Spanish Fork right there on, I don't know what highway that is. But they put in, they, they put in a, a, a road bike trail. And that connects with all of the other stuff that Spanish Fork has been doing. Um, they're really trying to build this idea that you can, uh, commute via bike. From South Utah County all the way up into Salt Lake if you so desire.
I'm too fat for that.
Yeah, me too. But the point is, you see it now.
Seven, I'm imagining.
You, 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 you see it down in Elk Ridge, you see, and they, anyway. It's something that we should have had on Summit Creek Drive at a minimum, but we, we, uh, we blew it. So.
Uh, Eric, uh, kind of following up with that a little bit. Could I ask you, as, as you look at your designs, to look at our general plan and there's a section in there on trails? And, um. You know, we may need to, I think it was probably done with an ideal in mind. I know the points you've raised and I think there's some, something to be said for that. But, um, we're going to be later this year redoing our general plan and we may need to make some changes to that. But the closer you can come to, to how the trails are described in the general plan, the better off. It will be. The, the city is trying to follow our general plan. Uh, we, for quite a few years, we really, we really didn't, but we've put, put a lot of work into the general plan. And, uh, you, you, with your involvement with cities, you know. The cities are, are really tried, try to be guided by the general plan. So if you could look at that and. And I, I'd welcome any feedback that, that you have as a, as with all of the work that you've done for other cities. That maybe we need to make some, make some changes to that.
Yeah, and I did reference that, Wayne, and I think just, just to follow through with that, I would love to have the trail. I think the overarching trail discussion with your, with your local trails. Uh, folks, uh, you know, just to understand. You know, how topography plays into that, who's ma, I mean, another big question is who's maintaining it, who's owning it, you know, all those things I think are, are things that we can take the next level on, on detail. After having, having this conversation.
Okay. That, I, I don't want to put anybody down, but don't, don't expect a lot but opinions from the trail committee. They're new, they're citizens, they, you know, if there's 10 of my committee, there's going to be 10 opinions. So just keep that in mind when the time comes to sit down and meet with them. They'll, they'll learn as much from you as you'll learn from them.
Yeah, thank you for the heads up.
Eric, Eric will just be glad not to have me there because then there would be 15 opinions with 11 people.
Brings five of his own, yeah.
Hey. What else? Well, we really appreciate everyone's time. I know, um. That, uh, this discussion has been going on much longer than I've been a part of the community and, uh. So we appreciate everyone's, you know. Desire to try to come to some kind of a resolution. Um, Wayne, you've mentioned a little bit about next steps as far as. Um, you know, public hearings and different things needed on the ordinance changes. Um, our plan in general is to. You know, amend, you know, submit an amended plat to kind of incorporate all these things that we'd like to do. Is that our next step or do we need to go through the public hearing portion first on ordinance change or what, what would you recommend?
Well, the danger of you coming forward with these ideas that particularly with the gates. I see it as just being a little bit premature and I hate to have you guys put all this work into it with, with an expectation. Of that it's going to happen, uh, you know. Taking your position, I would obviously hope that it would happen. But I think we would have enough here to show, uh, where the gates are proposed. Uh, private roads are proposed, uh, that we could have, we could go ahead and it's, um. We wouldn't be able to do it in February, but we could, because of the timing of it, but we could post for a public hearing in March. To put this out for public comment from the Planning Commission. And, uh, get public comment after these documents would be put out there on the website to kind of explain to the public what. What is being considered with the changing our ordinances to accommodate, uh, private roads and gates. Uh, should, uh, should those decisions be made?
Okay.
So.
I think, um, yeah, that's, that's great input. I think that we would probably want to circle back as, you know, just internally and kind of decide how we want to. Do that, right? And move forward and then we would, you know, contact you to get that set up.
That'll be fine.
Yeah, Wayne, I think if, if we can do, you know, and Paul kind of mentioned this earlier, kind of put together the game plan. And then, you know, if we can run it by a couple of members of the city council and, and, you know, the planning commission, let's just take a look at that game plan and see if the game plan works. You know, at least from a structure standpoint. Then, then I think that'd be good because more eyes we get on this and thinking, oh, we gotta do this, we gotta do that. You know, where do, where does Corbett have to be involved? Where do we need to get Craig involved? You know, let's make sure that we've got everybody. Uh, you know, on board at the proper time so that, you know, everybody knows about this ahead of time and isn't surprised when, when something comes to them, so.
Sure.
What, how much, um, advance notice is required for a public hearing, Wayne?
Jody needs to publish in the newspaper, uh, at least, uh, two weeks before the public hearing.
Okay.
So depending upon, I mean, that's one place, but that's a critical place. Uh, so depending upon the, uh. When the newspaper publishes and what their deadline is to get information to them to publish. All those factor into the, into the process. You could give Jody a call and she could probably with. Uh, give you a little bit more specific information if we're looking for possibly a public hearing in March. To tell you what the drop dead deadline would be for getting that information to her for, for publication.
Okay, thank you. How much of the, of the February 23rd public hearing will be about gates and private roads?
None of it, I don't think.
It, it's just about Title 11 in general, right? So.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other, Rex, did you have anything? I haven't heard much of your.
Yeah, usually when I'm on a Zoom call with Steve, I don't get a word in edgewise, so, um, thanks for asking, Ben. I really appreciate that. Steve, do you mind hitting mute on your? Screen for just a couple of minutes so I can talk?
Yes, I do.
No, um, I guess I just, I, you know, other than the value that's already been added by the team, I'll just say that. You know, I've, I've been working with Eric and Mike Carlton and Ben for several years and. Um, you know, Bucky and I were at the same barber and, uh, Bucky said, hey, we need to bring some horsepower into this thing and. And, uh, really get, get moving. I can tell you that from my position and, and my observation, sitting in several city council meetings. Um, I don't envy the position that, that you all are in, uh, but I'm grateful for you. Um, I've heard a lot of great things today and, and things that we just don't hear with other, uh, city councils and planning commissions. Um, I really appreciated the candor, especially from Bob, when, when he just comes straight out and says, what's in it for me? Um, I appreciate that, uh, but I, I really appreciate the, the talk around the inclusion. Um, and the talk around how this is the gem, you know, can be the gem of, of Woodland Hills. Um, what I'm most encouraged about is the collaborative effort that you all are allowing us to make together. Um, to really, uh, you know, put Summit Creek on the map with Woodland Hills, um, inclusively. And do it together. Um, you know, there's, we all have, we all have, you know, a bit of. Uh, self motivation and, and what our goals are, but at the end of the day, um, you know, when, to answer Bob's. Uh, self-motivation and, and what our goals are, but at the end of the day, um, you know, when, to answer Bob's question of what's in it for me. We need to know what, what would be in it for him, you know, what would be in it for his neighbor. So those, those candid discussions are, are very, very valuable and helpful. There's a lot of history with this project, but um, we're here to move it forward and move it in a, in a very collaborative way, so. I think I've overused the word collaborative uh, enough, and uh, anyways, thanks for asking, Ben.
Yeah, thanks, Rex. Any, uh, anything else, Bucky? Anything you wanted to say before we?
I, no, I think everyone just made great points, and uh, we appreciate our relationship with the city and. And uh, we're just trying to add to what the residents have been. Building as a community for a long time, and um. Just thank you for working through this with us, we appreciate it.
Yeah. Great, so um. I'm not sure if I'm the one that, I mean, I'm not the one to end the meeting, right? The, Paul probably has to do that. Or the mayor. Uh, so I'll turn it back over to you, Paul. Okay, thanks, Ben, and thanks, everyone, and uh, um, I'm just happy to be collaborative. I see that with a smile. So if, if any questions come up, uh, you know, y- you guys know who to, who'd ask those to get them around to us, but. Again, just so appreciative that you guys are always willing to go back to the drawing board and tweak things here and there to make it uh, better uh, overall, so. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't know, I, I think this is an official, this is an official city council meeting, so uh, i- i- if it is, we need to adjourn, so is. But, well, I guess we don't even have a quorum anymore. Um, so we can't even uh, do that. I think we can just adjourn without a quorum. Um, so unless anyone else has anything else to say, uh, I think we'll just call it good.
The only thing I'd say is if you really wanna go talk about trails, I think there's a Trails Committee meeting going on right now, so.
That was last night. It was last night, Steve.
Oh, it was last night, so that's good. I don't have to go back to that one then.
Another meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Bye. Bye, see ya. Bye.